Hi, everyone. We'll be making the announcement shortly that we'll be starting the meeting. Thank you so much for holding on.
The broadcast of the regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustment will now begin.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this live broadcast of our virtual meeting today, July 23rd, 2020. This meeting includes the remote participation of members is authorized under Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.021, due to the declared local health pandemic. For the record, my name is Matt Perry and I'm Chair of the Zoning Board of Adjustment. I want to, just before we call the roll, I want to thank people for hanging in there. There was a meeting before ours that went long, and I wanted to make sure that people who were watching either through the live stream or on TV were able to see the visuals. I will now call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll so that we may verify the presence of quorum.
Cooper.
Here.
Finlessen.
Hi.
Here.
Johannison.
Aye.
O'Giba.
Here.
Perry.
Here.
Sandberg.
Here.
Softly.
Aye.
Here.
We have nine members. Thank you.
Thank you. We have quorum, and with that, we'll proceed to our agenda, a copy of which was posted for public access in the city's Legislative Information Management System available at LIMS, L-I-M-S, dot Minneapolis MN dot gov. Is there a motion to approve this agenda?
So moved, Sandberg.
Is there a second?
Second, Softly.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper.
Aye.
Finlessen.
Aye.
Hutchins.
Aye.
Johannison.
Aye.
O'Giba.
Yes.
Perry.
Aye.
Sandberg.
Aye.
Softly.
Aye.
Wang. Aye.
That's nine yeas. Thank you.
That motion passes and the agenda is approved. I believe all the board members have seen a copy of the minutes from the July 9th, 2020 zoning board of adjustment meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Finlessen.
Second, Sandberg.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper.
Aye.
Finlessen.
Aye.
Hutchins.
Aye.
Hannison.
Aye.
O'Giba.
Abstain.
Perry.
Aye.
Sandberg.
Aye.
Softly.
Aye.
Wang.
Aye.
That's eight yeas. Thank you.
And so with that, the motion passes. The minutes from the zoning board of adjustment July 9th, 2020 meeting are approved. Mr. Ellis, are there any petitions or communications?
Yes, Chair Perry, members of the board, just an update on some appeals that came out of the board of adjustment. At the July 14th Committee of Business Inspections and Zoning, that committee voted to uphold the board's decision on two different items, denying appeals of the decision of the board of adjustment. The first being an appeal of a parking variance or a parking variance application at 525 10th Avenue Southeast, and the other being an appeal of the decision of the zoning administrator regarding whether something was a major or minor change at 4736 to 4740 Grand Avenue South. Thank you.
Mr. Ellis, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, did you say they upheld the decisions of the board?
Correct. Both appeals of the board of, both appeals of the board were denied, and the board's decisions were upheld.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's review the agenda. I will read the agenda number and the address of the project and state whether it's slated for withdrawal or discussion. We don't have any items on the agenda for land use requests that are consent items. So let me just quickly talk about what discussion items are. These are items for which the board will take public testimony, deliberate on, and make a decision. After the public testimony has been heard for each particular discussion item, I will close the public hearing on that agenda item. Once I close the public hearing for an item, no additional public testimony will be taken, but staff may be asked to address board questions. After the public hearing for an item is closed, board members will then discuss and act on motions, and the chair only votes in the case of a tie. So let's look at our three land use requests agenda items. Agenda item number five is 2209 and 2211, Portland Avenue, and this is a discussion item. Agenda item number six is 3501, Grand Avenue South. This item is being withdrawn. Approval of the agenda with this item acknowledges this, and no further action on the part of the board is required. Agenda item number seven is 1713, 36th Avenue Northeast, and this is a discussion item. So with that, we will move, we don't have any consent items on our agenda to consider, so we will move right into agenda item number five, which is 2209 and 2211, and I think that's Ms. Brandt.
Thank you, Chair Perry, members of the board. Item number five is for 2209 and 2211, Portland Avenue. These are a pair of mid-block parcels with R4 multiple-family zoning district. Currently on the site, there is a party wall duplex that was constructed in 1977. One unit of the duplex sits on either of the parcels with a common lot line running down the middle. Each of these units has a curb cut and a non-conforming surface parking stall in the front.
Ms. Brandt, just, I'm sorry for interrupting you, just for the public who are listening, can you describe what a party wall is?
Sure. A party wall is basically where there's an unperforated wall separating the units of a duplex, so they're entirely self-contained with the lot line running down the middle.
All right, thank you.
The proposal before you is to construct a 720 square foot garage. If this were a single parcel, it would exceed the allowable, allowable size of a garage, but given that these are two separate parcels, each of them is allotted 676 square feet, so the size of the garage is in conformance with the requirements of the zoning code. Similar to the duplex, this garage will have an unperforated wall running down the center with one parking space serving each of the dwelling units. Party wall garages are allowed under the zoning code, but only where they are located in the rear 40 feet of both of the parcels. So the proposal requires three different variances. One is to permit a detached accessory structure which is not located entirely to the rear of the principal structure. So we usually see those either in front or alongside. In this case, it is entirely to the front. The second variance is to reduce the established front yard setback from, sorry, there's a typo there, at 16.5 feet to the proposed 15 feet, and then a variance to the interior side yard setback along that common lot line between the two parcels, reducing that from five feet to zero feet. So if we could move to the next slide, please. So practical difficulties do exist on this site with regards to locating an accessory structure not entirely to the rear. The structure is within four feet of the lot lines on either side, and similarly is not served by a public alley, so there is, there is no physical way to get a vehicle to the rear of the site. So staff does find that there are practical difficulties in complying with the ordinance that are associated with this request. However, the proposal does not meet the spirit and intent of the ordinance. I have listed there up on the left-hand corner, the requirements, general requirements for accessory uses, which is that they are subordinate to their principal use, that they are incidental, that they are accessory, and similarly that they not be present a detriment to health, safety, or welfare of surrounding properties. Similarly, this proposal is in contrast with several outlined goals of the Minneapolis 2040 Comprehensive Plan, such as establishing clear sightlines in and out of dwellings, natural surveillance, eyes on the street. And those are reinforced with the city's adopted crime prevention through environmental designer SEPTED policies. The Comprehensive Plan does state that these SEPTED principles should also be applied to existing developments, not just for new construction. The essential character of the area is quite varied, but generally, the low-intensity residential development that we see in here predates the zoning code for the, for the most part. The zoning code was initially adopted in 1924, and the regulations that were adopted, both in the initial zoning code and every sort of iteration of the zoning code since then, have been informed to regulate and incentivize the sort of development that we saw prior to the adoption of the zoning ordinance. So the rules of the zoning ordinance are largely informed by areas like this, which we don't see accessory structures in the front. We see windows and porches, which are incorporated in the urban design elements of the zoning code. Similarly, constructing a detached garage in the front could potentially present a detriment to health, safety, and welfare. Portland Avenue is quite a busy street for both vehicle and pedestrian traffic, and removing those sightlines of a vehicle backing out of a garage does have the potential to create safety concerns. If we could move on to the next slide, please. With regards to the front yard variance, staff finds that practical difficulties do not exist on the site. The established front yard is at an angle there with the farthest point requiring a setback of 16.5 feet. The southern corner of the garage, you can see, is meeting the established front yard as it intersects with the district front yard of 15 feet. The zoning code requires six feet of separation between an accessory structure and a principal structure. 13 feet here is proposed, so it would be feasible to kind of move the garage back a little bit and meet that front yard setback, and still maintain that required separation between the two structures. Staff finds that this proposal does meet the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and of the Comprehensive Plan. And while the front yard variance in and of itself may not negatively affect the essential character or the health, safety, or welfare, as discussed previously, the proposal as a whole is not meeting that third finding. We could advance one slide, please. For the side yard setback, staff finds that there are practical difficulties with regards to this side yard setback request. Each of the lots individually is only 25 feet wide, and as seen in some of the pictures or in the report, this very much reads as a single 50-foot-wide lot rather than two side-by-side 25-feet lots. So the narrowness of the lot constitutes a practical difficulty, and given the nature of the development, staff finds that it does meet the spirit and intent of the ordinance because it doesn't, it doesn't appear to be two separate parcels. And again, with regards to that third finding, the side yard variance in and of itself would not negatively affect essential character or health, safety, or welfare, but the proposal as a whole does have some negative effects in that regard. Therefore, staff is recommending denial of these variances, and I am available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Brandt, for your presentation. Are there any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? I see none. So let's open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak? If you're on the phone, please press * 6 to speak.
All right, yes, I would. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Ah, great, thank you. So yeah, thank you for the time today, and thanks, Alyssa, for that presentation. I can definitely tell you, it was not my intent to have the front yard variance, so that is simply a mistake by my surveyor. He told me that I should be within the front yard setback requirement, so I did acknowledge that. But in terms of your concerns of the health and safety and well-being of the community based on this plan, I do actually feel that the garage and the changes to the property will actually enhance that and fully comply with the 2040 plan. So the design and the site plan of the garage does provide clear and direct sightlines between both the front door and the fence gates to the property, all the way to the sidewalk and the street, you know, including nine feet of direct visibility between those areas to the house, to provide natural surveillance from the property to the public right-of-way. In addition, the garage has a height of 14 feet, which I understand, you know, could be understood as, you know, obstructing the view. However, the house is two and a half levels high, in total 34 feet, and as such, there are numerous front-facing windows on the second and third levels that would oversee the garage all the way to the street and sidewalk level. In addition, the area between the garage and the house that would be obstructed from the street and sidewalk do have direct lines of sight between both adjacent properties and their side windows to allow for natural surveillance. And then in addition, as part of the design and structure and location of this garage, it will replace existing mature trees and vegetation that currently obstruct that view. So not only will it be similar in size, it will be comparable to what is currently there today. And then in regards to the public, you know, health and safety of, you know, conflicts with vehicles exiting the garage or in, you know, hitting pedestrians or other vehicles, the plan is to remove dense vegetation, trees, and a three-foot-high wood retaining wall with built-in vegetation that are both immediately adjacent to the sidewalk. As part of removing those, the sightlines of visibility will actually be enhanced by having the garage, as it will be just surface, you know, driveway in and out of, instead of, you know, current obstructions. And then lastly, to enhance the public, you know, health and safety of the neighborhood, I think a key component of theft and crime prevention is to deter criminal activity by removing opportunities for crime. And by providing a secure garage for storage of vehicles and personal possessions, it places high-value assets out of sight and reach of criminal activity, and thus could improve the health, safety, and welfare of the local community. Lastly, there were no public comments made by adjacent property owners, other neighbors, nor by my neighborhood group or city council office that indicated that any of them felt that the garage would cause any sort of detriment to the health, safety, or welfare of the community. I believe the garage will actually provide a number of enhancements to the community health, safety, and welfare via improved sightlines and surveillance opportunities based on the garage having a lower profile and height than the existing dense vegetation and trees, and based on the secure structure that will provide safe storage to deter criminal activity. As the health, safety, and welfare is the primary and only factor noted in the staff's recommendation to deny the variances, and the staff report acknowledges that other guidance and intent has been met, including the presence of practical difficulties that exist to prevent with compliance of two of the three ordinances, I propose that the committee find in favor of the applicant, notwithstanding the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thanks. I should have asked for your name and address before you started speaking, sir.
Oh, sorry. My name is Matt Abens, the property owner of 2209 Portland Avenue, and I'm manager of 2211 Portland Avenue.
Okay. And if I can get some clarification on the variance of reducing the front yard, are you saying that's not an issue?
Nope, that is not an issue at all. My intent was to be fully within the front yard setback requirements, and my surveyor indicated that I was, but he obviously made an error, and I was only within the district required front yard setback of 15 feet. But I do see now that it does not meet the established front yard setback. So I would have no issue or no concern with moving the property, you know, one foot closer to the residents to comply with that.
Okay, just wanted to get clarification on that. Thanks. Are there questions of the applicant? Mr. Softly.
Thank you, Chair Perry, and Mr. Abens, thank you very much for your presentation. I had a quick question for you about the height of the structure. You noted that it's going to be 14 feet in height, and I'm curious if you can elaborate as to where that measurement is taken. Is that from the top of the roof, or is that from the midpoint?
Yes, that is from the, you know, very top of the peak, the top of the peak of the roof, so the center and highest point of the roof, as it will, you know, slant in each direction towards the house and towards the driveway, side block area. That is the absolute highest point in the garage, is 14 feet.
Okay. And then a follow-up question for you is, what is the height of the existing structure?
Same thing. So in the immediate, you know, the middle of the property, the peak of the roof is 34 feet high, and that's the very, immediately, there's no, you know, attic space or anything, it's just all the way up to the roof.
Sure. And what are the height of the windows on the second floor?
So, yeah, one of the windows is roughly five feet high. It looks out, and then there's, that's a horizontal window, and then there's a vertical window that's, you know, four feet tall that, you know, is in the middle of the room, so, you know, it's roughly at knee height and goes to above your head.
Okay. I'm trying to get a sense, looking at the photos here that we have in the board packet, but it appears to me that the windows on the second level facing Portland Avenue can be no more than 20 feet above the ground. Would that be correct?
Yep, I would say that's accurate.
So they're about 20 feet tall, and the garage would be about 14 feet at the peak?
Sorry, are you talking, so there's three levels of windows. Are you referring to the middle level or the very top level of windows?
I'm, I'm referring to the ones at the very top. The photo that I have is towards the back of our board packets, and I'm seeing that there are, at the very bottom, the very lowest level, I have three windows that appear to be about knee height, maybe two and a half feet.
Yep.
And then above that, we'll say maybe seven feet higher. It appears to be the base of another window. And I would estimate that that's maybe seven feet, and then I'd estimate that going to the next level of windows, the very top window of the next level is maybe at a height of about 18 feet above the ground. Would you say that that is?
Well, so the middle window is actually roughly 10 feet from the very bottom of the window.
Which window is that?
The middle window is just a sole window. That is roughly 10 feet from the ground.
Okay. And then the next windows above that, they would be maybe approximately 10 feet, eight feet, 10 feet above?
I would say, yep, so approximately 17 to 18 feet from the ground is the very bottom of the window.
The very bottom of the window is 17 feet?
Yes.
Okay, so when we're, and this is a little cumbersome over video conference, but if we look and count, say, the shingling, or not the shingles, the siding.
Yep.
Are you estimating that that siding is about one foot each, that each piece of siding measures approximately one foot in height?
Yes, yep. They are 12-inch lap siding with a slight overlap between each piece, so, you know, roughly 10 to 11 inches with the overlap.
With the overlap?
Yep.
Okay. But, I mean, that still puts my measurement somewhere in the 20-foot range, though, if we're counting. 20 feet to the top of the uppermost windows?
Yep, from the, from the very bottom of it, yep. So then, then you have the visibility from the entire window as you're standing, looking out the tall, skinny one, or, you know, standing, looking out the, you know, kind of horizontal, smaller ones.
Okay. All right, well, that's really helpful to give me some sense of the scale. And then is the final photo in the board packet, it shows from a deck with red paint looking to the rear yard, is that a picture from your unit? Are you just demonstrating the lack of an alley access?
Yep, I'm demonstrating just the lack of an alley, and yeah, the narrowness of the lot and how it would not be feasible to build a garage anywhere else.
Okay. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions of the applicant? I see none. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? I don't think we have anybody else in queue who would like to speak on this item. So with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Board comment? Do we have any board comment? Yes, Mr. Sandberg.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with staff recommendation, and I would tend to support that. I'd like to hear from the other board members.
Thanks for those comments. Mr. Johannison.
Thanks, Chair Perry. I think it's, I think, we've got to keep looking at the site, and I keep seeing that it's going to be beyond, you know, it'll be setback from the road far enough to align with the other buildings. There are a lot of driveways already along that stretch, and they're going to park there anyway. So if they're going to back out with a garage, or they're going to back out without a garage, I don't see a problem with that. I hate to set a precedent, but it's a weird lot. It is tight, it's small, there's no alley, and getting, getting cars off the street in a safe, secure manner seems to make sense to me. So I'm leaning to support the applicant.
All right, thanks for those comments, Mr. Johannison. Mr. Softly.
Thank you, Chair Perry. I am leaning to support staff, but I want to just throw my agreement in with, with Board Member Johansson, that, that the cars are parked there anyway, and I don't see any additional danger from backing out of a garage than there is from backing out of the existing surface parking.
Thank you for that comment. Mr. Hutchins.
Yeah, I just want to say I would echo Mr. Johannison. I agree that there's no added danger to backing out of a parking space versus a garage, especially with how far setback that garage will be off the road. It looks like it'll be almost in line with the adjacent property structure. So I would go, I'm leaning towards the applicant's side of this thing, too. So, if anybody else's got something on it.
Before I ask for more comments, can staff just reiterate for a briefly what their comment is, which covers all three variances on finding number three? Is it a safety issue that you're talking about?
I think I have your question right. You wanted to kind of go over like what the SEPTED policies are for the city. Is that correct? that correct?
Yeah, well, so some of our board members are talking about whether there's a safety issue backing up and having cars there. Is that staff's, is that where staff had contention with finding number three?
Staff had contention with both elements of the third finding. With regards to meeting the essential character of the area, a garage in front of a house is quite a change from the typical built form of this area. And then additionally, did have additional concerns regarding to the safety, not just of the vehicular movements, but of having this sort of lack of visibility created by having a detached garage in front of the house.
Okay. Thank you. And I didn't, I don't mean to put words in the mouths of my colleagues, so I think they are also talking about the essential character when they say that cars are going to be parked there anyhow. There's going to be something there. All right. Are there additional comments? Mr. Ogiba.
Thank you, Chair Perry. One of the concerns in looking at this plan, and as I've gone through it, kind of going back to the essential character piece, is just the pure bulk of this garage servicing two units as one single kind of superstructure in front of the house. I just don't, I understand the need to have parking for each unit and for each portion of the duplex, but combining that together in one particular building out in front of this doesn't seem to me to fit very much in a character of how that would feel. I know from a size standpoint, it was approximately 10%, a little under 10% larger than what would be allowed if this was a single lot in a single-family home. I certainly, I look at the safety issue, and I understand the same thing, cars parked in the front yard isn't aesthetically pleasing nor necessarily part of what I think the city envisions or would be part of this. So I don't know that. I think there could be a solution here, I just don't know if this is the best one necessarily, but I don't necessarily believe it also makes the situation any worse. The other part I'd like to say, I know, as we go through this procedurally, and I, in hearing from the applicant, which was very helpful, was that we have three variances here, and variance A regarding the front yard setback is something that the applicant believes is achievable without variance. I certainly can say, hearing that was great, as I do not support that portion of the variance in moving it closer. The other two, I'm certainly open to further comment and idea, I just wanted to share those thoughts.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ogiba. Are there any other comments?
John Finlison.
Yes, Mr. Finlison, and then Mr. Hutchinson's.
It's my feeling they already have parking, and that I favor staff's position on this matter. I think they've analyzed it correctly. Thank you.
Thanks for those comments. Mr. Hutchins.
Speaking of Mr. Ogiba's point about the bulk of the structure being kind of not in line with the area, I just wanted to say, I look in, looking up in maps and street views and stuff of the area, there's apartment buildings and flat lots and homes right on their front property lines. I mean, the area is quite varied. I mean, so, agreed the bulk is large, but compared to some of the other structures around it, it's really not overboard in comparison. Just wanted to make that point.
Thanks for that comment, Mr. Hutchins. Is there anyone else? Mr. Southley, you'd like to make a motion? Mr. Southley?
Chair Perry, can you hear me okay?
You may be in mute. Go ahead.
Sorry, I had a little internet hiccup there. Given Mr. Ogiba's comments, I think it would be prudent to move to deny the front yard variance separately from the other two, because I think we have some divided opinions on the board.
Yes. I was just going to suggest...
I moved to deny the front yard variance.
Is there a second? Mr. Ogiba is seconding that motion?
Yeah, I'll second that motion. Thanks, Chair Perry.
There's a motion and a second to deny the reduction of the front yard variance. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper.
Aye.
Aye.
Hutchins.
Aye.
Johansson.
Aye.
Ogiba.
Yes.
Sandberg.
Aye.
Southley.
Aye.
That's eight ayes.
So the request is denied, and I think we can take, from a practical point of view, I think we can take the two others as a group of, and make a motion on those unless there's Mr. Sandberg.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I'll move staff recommendation.
There's a motion, and there's a second, I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Southley.
Southley seconds. Is there any further discussion on the motion? And the motion is to deny those two requests. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper.
Aye.
Finlison.
Aye.
Hutchins.
Nay.
Johansson.
Nay.
Ogiba.
Yes.
Sandberg.
Aye.
Southley.
Aye.
Aye. That's six ayes to nay.
So that motion passes, and the requests are denied. Mr. Abin, you can talk to the staff person who was assigned to that project to see what your options are going forward.
Good, thank you.
Yep, thanks for hanging in there on the phone call. Let's move on to item number seven. This is 1713 36th Avenue Northeast. Mr. Colas.
Thank you, Chair Perry, and members of the board. This item is a request for a variance to increase the maximum allowed length of a recreational vehicle or RV from 30 feet to 35 feet for the property at 1713 36th Avenue Northeast. This property is located in the R1 zoning district. Can be advanced to the next slide, please. The property is a single-family dwelling, one-story, with a detached garage in the rear yard. The property is slightly irregular with a front lot line and is 61 feet wide, which is a little bit wider than the rear lot line, which is 54 feet. The other two sides of the property are each 130 feet long. The property slopes down slightly from the front to the rear, and there is a public alley, an improved public alley behind the property. Across that alley to the north is a private wooded undeveloped area and some railroad right-of-way. So the nearest homes to the north of the subject property are approximately 400 feet away.
Mr. Colas, before you go on, can you explain what the yellow line is that's going down the alley?
Chair Perry, the two lines going along that alley are actually the sides of the boundaries of that public alley. If you look at the photo on the screen now, to the left of that furthest left yellow line is a private parcel that is all part of that undeveloped wooded area. And so there, you can see the dirt and, you know, maybe the area where people are driving and parking vehicles doesn't exactly follow the lines of that improved alley, but from, Public Works has confirmed that it is an improved alley, and those are the approximate lot lines that are there.
So can I, so some of, it looks like from this picture, there's some vehicles that are in the alley itself?
As it appears on this photo, that is correct. Again, the property lines as shown here are approximate in their location, maybe off by a few feet or so in any direction, but you're correct that it does appear that way in this photo.
And then people are just driving around them, or would drive around them on private land?
That is my understanding correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry for the interruption.
That's okay. Thank you, Chair Perry. And can we actually continue to the next slide? Thank you. These are some photos that are submitted by the applicant that show the detached garage on the subject property and some other improvements in the rear yard, including a patio area. And the bottom photos are of the RV, which has been purchased by the applicant. It measures approximately 35 feet long and eight feet wide with a height of 10 and a half feet at the highest point in the back. Next slide, please. These are some additional photos by the applicant. It's a little small, but in the top right corner, you'll see a photo that shows the RV, and that is, and the RV is parked on the subject property as shown by the rest of the applicant's application materials. It's a parking area that was constructed by the applicant and is located entirely on the subject property, so not on, not in the right-of-way. The applicant is proposing to park the RV on this portion of the subject property, so this is outside of an enclosed structure, when he is not using it for recreation off of the subject property. Can we go to the next slide, please? And then we can stay here for the rest of the presentation. This is a site plan prepared by the applicant, and also shows that the subject property in the bottom left, you can see the proposed RV parking spot as designated by the applicant. It would be, have a setback of one foot from that alley side. Permitted uses of the RV on the subject property are limited just to the actual parking or storage of the RV itself, as well as any incidental sort of preparation necessary for its use off the subject property. When it's stored or parked on this property, it may not be used as a dwelling unit or for any incidental uses such as sleeping or working in any capacity, and he, the applicant cannot conduct any activities that would meet the definitions of major or minor auto repair as defined in the zoning code. The zoning code does require that on lots that are 130 feet long or greater, which, for RVs which are not stored in an enclosed building, the RV shall not exceed a length of 30 feet, but the zoning code does authorize variances to increase the maximum allowed length of an RV to no more than 35 feet, which is the applicant's request in this case. To talk about the findings, the first finding regarding practical difficulties, staff finds that this is met. The applicant's garage is set back approximately 24 feet from the rear lot line, which is a relatively large setback in this case, closer to the house, and it creates a significant open space directly along the alley. This is as opposed to most garages in the city, which are typically located closer to the alley, with the bulk of the open space on the property being between the house and the garage. Furthermore, the subject property is 54 feet wide at the rear, which is wider than many residential lots in the city, and allows the applicant to park the RV parallel to the alley, as opposed to perpendicular to the alley and extending closer to the front of the property. These conditions were created during the original plating of the area and construction of the garage in this location, which were both prior to the adoption of the city's current zoning ordinance and not created by the applicant. The finding regarding reasonable use of the property in keeping with the spirit and intent of the ordinance in the comprehensive plan, staff finds that this is also met. For RVs specifically, the spirit and intent of the ordinance is generally to limit the size of an RV parked on a residential property and maximize its separation from other nearby residences or residential properties, but it does allow larger RVs to be parked or stored on larger properties. The maximum allowed length of an RV is based specifically on the length of the property measured from the front to the rear, under the assumption that the vehicle would be parked parallel to that dimension, so perpendicular to the alley in this case, but the subject property, again, is relatively wide at the rear with enough space for the applicant to park parallel to the alley, and this maximizes the separation from nearby dwellings as well as the public street in keeping with the spirit and intent of the ordinance. With a finding regarding essential character of the locality and potential injury or detriment to the subject property or nearby properties, staff finds that this is met. The proposed variance would not alter the essential character of the locality or be injurious to the use or enjoyment of other property in the vicinity. Again, the alley, or the area across the public alley from the subject property is a private wooded undeveloped land and railroad right-of-way, which limits the number of residential properties directly near the subject property and with higher potential for impact. The entire RV would be parked in the rear nine feet of the subject property as far away from neighboring dwellings in the public street as possible, and the RV would be substantially screened from the public street and nearby properties due to existing structures on the property as well as the slope and vegetation in the area. So visibility of this RV when it's parked there should be relatively limited. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the applicant's requested variance to increase the maximum allowed length of a recreational vehicle from 30 feet to 35 feet, subject to condition listed in the staff report. Available for questions if needed.
Thank you, Mr. Colas, for the presentation. We have a question for Mr. Southley.
Thank you, Chair Perry, and thank you, Mr. Colas. I had a quick question related to a statement you made about halfway through your presentation, and I wanted to make sure I understood it correctly here. It sounds like you said the applicant has, by right, the ability to store up to a 25-foot RV on his property, and when the property exceeds 125 feet in length, he can add an additional foot per foot of property line with an absolute maximum of 30. In your presentation, I thought I heard you say 35, but reading your report, it says 30. So I guess which is the absolute maximum number as allowed under the ordinance?
Thank you, Chair Perry and Board Member Southley. The absolute maximum allowed length of the recreational vehicle as allowed by the zoning ordinance is 30 feet. The zoning ordinance does authorize variance applications to extend that up to 35 feet. That is the applicant's request in this case, is to extend from a maximum of 30 allowed by the zoning code to the 35 feet proposed.
Okay, thank you. You did say that clearly, and I did mishear it, misread it.
Mr. Sandberg.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you said that if an RV were stored inside, it would not require a variance. Is there enough room on this property to build a structure that would enclose this RV?
Thank you, Chair Perry and Board Member Sandberg. There, it's possible that they could, but they would need to make substantial alterations to the rest of the property, including potentially tearing down the existing detached garage, which is, I'm guessing, is not tall enough to store the RV that is in question here. So it is possible, but not without making substantial other alterations.
Any other questions?
One follow-up on that, and those alterations could be made without a variance?
Possibly, yes.
Mr. Southley?
Thank you, Chair Perry. Mr. Colas, in the opening of your report, you indicate that the vehicle measures 35 feet and eight, oh, my mistake again, I'm reading too quickly, 35 feet by eight feet wide. Terrific, forget my question.
Any other questions of staff? Mr. Colas, what I'd like to do is get a little bit more clarity on the practical difficulty.
Any other questions?
One follow-up on that, and those alterations could be made without a variance?
Possibly, yes.
Mr. Southley?
Thank you, Chair Perry. Mr. Colas, in the opening of your report, you indicate that the vehicle measures 35 feet and eight, oh, my mistake again, I'm reading too quickly, 35 feet by eight feet wide. Terrific, forget my question.
Any other questions of staff? Mr. Colas, what I'd like to do is get a little bit more clarity on the practical difficulty. It seems like what, when I read the report, it seemed like the practical difficulty actually was more a uniqueness about the property rather than a practical difficulty, where the practical, where the uniqueness of the property was that there was room for the location of the RV to be in the rear part of the yard.
Thank you, Chair Perry. Yes, staff's position is that due to the size of the property, which is slightly irregular and larger than many residential properties, as well as the arrangement of the existing buildings, including the garage being set back further, that creates the conditions that would allow this garage to be there. And this relates back to the spirit and intent. The intent is generally to push that further back, the RV further back towards the property, which typically is just not possible, where in this case it is on the subject property.
Okay, so that doesn't strike me quite as a practical difficulty, but more a uniqueness of the property. Are there any other questions? With that, I will open the public hearing. I think we have three speakers. The applicant, Lauren Sherber, would you like to speak? And you can do, press star six on your phone to unmute yourself?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you, Chair Perry and members of the board for listening. My only comments are that we do intend to park this here limitedly. It'll be stored over the winter months, mostly for loading and unloading and minor repairs and maintenance. You know, from a practical difficulty standpoint, we do have some unique soil conditions due to kind of a previous garbage dump that was in the area. And so the soil conditions are really poor. To put a new garage in, we would have to dig down 15 to 20 feet through garbage, basically, to hit something solid. And so that is a uniqueness. Our existing garage is sinking in four different directions, and that's a little further up the hill and on better soil. But to get a RV pulled in and out of a garage and to build that garage because of the, well, former garbage dump would be, I think, more of a practical difficulty than a uniqueness of a lot. So I just wanted to make that comment. And then just say that, you know, because of the uniqueness of that alley, it's out of the way of all garbage trucks and interference. And there's about seven in that alley that, so there's about seven people that use that alley to access those garages. And beyond that, I think that, thank the staff member that you did a great job of presenting our proposal.
Okay.
Can I take any questions?
Sure. Are there any questions of Mr. Sherber? Yes, Mr. Ogiba?
Great. Thank you, Chair Perry. Thank you, Mr. Sherber, for being on the line and holding on through all this. Can I just, just some date clarifications, just so we make it, when did you purchase this RV?
It was April of this year.
And you've lived in the house prior to that, correct?
Yes, since 2003.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Southley?
Thank you, Chair Perry. Mr. Sherber, I'm curious, I'm looking at some of the public comments that have come in about it. And I'm curious, what is your relationship with the co-owner of the property, Jill Wilhelmie?
Yep, that's my wife. She's upstairs and on the phone, too, and hoping to make a comment. So we're married.
Okay. Is there any reason why she submitted a comment and didn't disclose that she lives on the property?
Probably just an oversight on her part. Mostly, we've been working to resolve differences with neighbors and try to accommodate their concerns. And so she's a peacemaker or negotiator a little bit more. And so her comment is more of a compromise as to how to make this less of a concern to the neighbors. So I think it's more of an oversight on her part.
Is there a reason why she didn't disclose that you and she are married?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions of Mr. Sherber? I see none. So let's move on to the next caller, Jill Wilhelmie.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi there. Yes, this is Jill Wilhelmie. For the questions earlier, no intent to deceive. I do live at the property with my husband, Lauren Sherber. We purchased the house in 2003. I would say I did not submit the application, Lauren did. I consider the RV to be perhaps a bit of an unusual hobby in the sense that he enjoys vintage things and, you know, would like to spend some time remodeling this RV to make it how he wants it to be. He is correct that some of our neighbors are not excited about the idea of an RV being permanently parked in that location. I also am not in support of the RV being permanently parked in that location. I think a reasonable compromise that a lot of people could live with would be that if, you know, the vehicle can be parked there for limited time and limited purpose. You know, I think, you know, he has been updating the RV, making, remodeling it on the inside. You know, he's hung curtains and did tile and some things like that. Or, you know, perhaps when he is getting ready for a trip, unloading or loading, those seem to be reasonable and acceptable reasons to have the RV at our property. I do not support the variance being granted without some sort of conditions like that.
Okay, thank you. Our next caller is Ryan Linwood. If you press star six and give your name and address for the record.
Hey, thank you, Chair Perry. This is Ryan Linwood. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Board, my name's Ryan Linwood. I live next door at 171936 Avenue Northeast. So I must confess very candidly, I am stunned that this was viewed as neither a detriment to property values nor a safety issue. I don't know if it comes across clearly in the photos. It is different from an aerial photo, staying up close. And while I realize aesthetics are a subjective thing, I don't know of anybody that would pay more for a house with the equivalent of a 50s diner in their backyard. But from a safety issue, and I do want to focus on that because I think that's less subjective, this is an alley that is irregular. You know, I realize we have some yellow lines on the photo in terms where the official lines are for the alley. But, you know, people follow the road the way it's laid out or they see asphalt. This is an alley that does get very narrow in spots, including right next to where the RV would be parked. This is absolutely a safety issue. The RV is parked very close to my property where my driveway is at. I have a garage, a two-and-a-half car detached garage back there, where both my wife and I park our cars, my son's car, which I think you can actually see in the photo, is in the back there. It's a silver Malibu. Thankfully, most of the people in our neighborhood drive at a reasonable speed down the alley, but I cannot say that for everyone. We have people that frequently drive very fast through the alley that is unfortunately not enforced by the police. And we have a, you know, six, seven, eight feet in terms of the width of that RV blocking that view when we're either pulling out or walking across the street with either my son or our pets. But just in general, with the vehicles getting through there, I think there is a significant safety issue there.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments. Thanks for hanging in there as well. I don't think we have anybody else in queue on the phone line. So I am going to close the public hearing, and I will solicit board comment. Board comment? Yes, Ms. Cooper?
I agree with the staff's findings, and I think they did a good job of going through all the different avenues and all of the considerations. I can understand how it might sort of appear as a massive detriment to live next door and to be something new, but it feels like it's, it would be okay, and I would move to adopt, to approve, but looking forward to hearing comments.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Mr. Joe Hannison?
Thank you, Chair Perry. I don't know, I don't even feel like it's really an alley. It looks like a paved area where people drive in and out. And I think adding five feet in the opposite direction of Mr. Linwood's property seems like not a big deal to me. I know it's big, but if it was 30 feet by 10 feet by eight feet, it could be there. So I agree with staff findings. I'm curious what my other board members feel.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Sandberg, and then Mr. Ogiba.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Perry. I have some concerns as you brought up with the idea that the unique characteristic of this property is something that enables the variances and not the fact that it requires a variance in order to conform. I think there is no uniqueness, unique characteristic to this property that would not allow it to be in an enclosed space, which then would not require a variance. So I have some concern about just the premise of this. And I guess if I thought it should be denied, it would be based on the absence of unique characteristics of this property. But I'd like to hear from other board members.
Thank you for that comment. Mr. Ogiba?
Thank you, Chair Perry. You know, essentially, looking at this variance, we're talking about the RV and not the lot. We're looking at an increase in the size of what we're allowing of well over 15% in size. So just looking at and thinking about in the scope of what ordinance or code allows versus what we're being asked to vary, to me, that's fairly significant. We're not, we're not trying to fit a small piece in here. I think it's a really cool-looking RV. I think it's fantastic to spend time and money and rehabbing it and being there. Just because a lot could fit it doesn't mean it should. And I'm looking at this, and I essentially agree. I actually, in all honesty, don't find for any of the three findings. I think the property could fit it. That doesn't, I don't see where the difficulty is in fitting the RV that would require us to change a variance by 15%. I certainly don't know that it fits in the character of the neighborhood. I realize there's a lot of stuff kind of parked in the back of that, of the homes along that area. I don't know that means we should legally add to it and condone that more things kind of fit back into that. And I certainly think it can create a safety issue. I mean, it's a, looks, I mean, looking at the size of that from the photos on the front, to the front of the house, think about from the back of the house, that creates, you know, a gigantic barrier there that could certainly be an area that, it almost fence-like in its nature, an area that it could block viewpoints. It could be an area for other shenanigans or things as well. So notwithstanding staff's recommendation, I don't see fine for any three of the variances in this, in my opinion.
All right. Thanks for that, those comments, Mr. Ogiba. Is there anybody else who would like to comment?
John Fendelson?
Yes, Mr. Fendelson.
Yeah, this is one of those instances where I think that the intent of the original ordinance with a size limitation was to limit the impact a vehicle like that would have on a neighborhood. And simply because the lot is larger and would allow it doesn't particularly mean that it's a good idea. So I'm not in favor of granting the variance.
Thanks for those comments. Anyone else? Like to speak? Mr. Ogiba, you would like to make a motion?
Thank you, Chair Perry. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, notwithstanding staff's findings, to deny the variance as requested. Again, I don't find for any of the three findings. I don't believe there are practical difficulties on the lot that would allow for compliance with the ordinance. I don't see this as fitting in the essential character nature of the neighborhood, and I certainly think that it could have effect on the health and safety and welfare of the adjoining property.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I second.
There was someone in before you, Mr. Fendelson. Who is the second?
Wang, second.
Wang, thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? And with that, would the clerk please call the roll? Again, the motion is to deny the, to adopt staff finding and deny the request.
Cooper?
Nay.
Fendelson?
Aye.
Questions?
Aye.
Hannison?
Aye.
Ogiba?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Aye.
Aye.
Wang?
Aye.
That's seven yea, one nay.
So that motion passes, and what that means, Mr. Sherber, is that your request is denied. You can talk to the staff member assigned to this, Mr. Colas, about what your options are going forward. And with that, we've come to the end of items for land use requests. I think we've completed everything on the agenda for this meeting. I'll ask members and staff if there are any other matters to come before this meeting. I see none. And if not, without objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Our next meeting will be August 13th, 2020. Thank you, everyone.